Please stand to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Mr. Gignac?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Seven present.
The first order of business is the minutes for approval. We have the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of Wednesday, October 4, 2017, for approval. Do we have a motion by Ms. Martin to approve? Accept on file. Second by Mr. Hoey. Discussion. All in favor, all opposed. So voted. Next is permission to enter. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion approved by Mr. Gignac, second by Mr. Gendron. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next, the reports from the superintendent, the first of which is Project Learn. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And for Project Learn, we have here Elzinon, the director of Project Learn, and we're going to ask her to give us a little presentation on Project Learn and the partnership we have with Project Learn as Lowell Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kelfawy, and thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and honorable school committee members. I'm really delighted to be here with all of you tonight to share a little bit about Project Learn and some of what the work we've been doing with the public schools. And we've been really excited to partner with you and also be kind of an engine to help build those programs that you see as being really significant for the growth of our students. So I'm going to share a few details about some of the programs we're working on, and, you know, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. So a little bit about what is Project Learn. Well, we're kind of like Lowell's Education Foundation in a sense, although we don't have an endowment just yet, but we hope to in the future. So we're kind of like the opportunity generator in the schools. And what we look for is developing resources and innovative programs to support student success. And we do that across all the schools, and our work has touched 14,000 students pretty much annually. So here's a little snapshot of Project Learn's current programs. You can see we have Lowell Loves to Learn Book Nook program for the early childhood and the early years. Nellie Mae School Community Engagement is a new project. It's a program we'll talk a little bit more about called Your Voice Matters. PALS mentoring is at the high school level. Career Academy, the new full-service community school and alternative high school. There's been a clean energy program and pathways program at the high school, and also alumni relations. We also support things like Idea Camp, Farm to School, and Makerspaces. So just a little bit about this program. It's kind of been a crowd favorite this year. The Book Nook program, the goal is to bring 10,000 books a year to Lowell kids. And we've already, our goal is to get 15 to 20 book nooks across the community. Right now, we have 10 book nooks throughout the community, and we've distributed 4,000 books to Lowell kids, basically age zero, four years, zero to eight. And the real goal is to increase access to books and early childhood programming, as well as boosting school readiness, which we know is such an important priority here in the community. You can see some photos of some events we've had. One was Cambodia Mutual Assistance Association, Cambodian New Year. Also, Eastern Bank hosted a summer book fest in June. There's also, of course, other programs we've worked to support with Mill City Grows, for example. The USDA Farm to School grant supported eight elementary and middle school garden beds. But now we're up to 14 garden beds across our schools, which is really powerful. And this is all thanks to Mill City Grows and also the real leadership that Lowell Public Schools staff has shown in bringing STEM and hands-on education to our students. Idea Camp serves 225 students a year across 12 workshops, and we had nearly 100 students attend Idea Camp on scholarships thanks to scholarships from, or excuse me, thanks to grants from several different organizations like Trinity EMS, Align Credit Union, Verizon Foundation, and United Ways Segal, or the Summer Learning Program. And of course, with Idea Camp, we had this really fabulous kinetic sculpture, which is sort of the pride and joy of the Rogers STEM Academy. But these students worked on this project, and it was so fun and so fabulous. This is Cheeseburger in Paradise, couldn't have a better title. And the goal was really to get all the students at the Rogers School and their families involved in this awesome city event of the Kinetic Sculpture Race. So just a quick snapshot. Since 2013, Project Learn has developed about 155 million, or excuse me, 1 point, I wish it was 155 million. That would really be transformative. We're working on that. Developed 1.55 million to fund technology upgrades that provide digital resources to our fifth grade students, really working towards a science and technology and math and language arts, as well as STEM professional development, our life sciences Makerspace for Lowell High, particularly the freshmen, and college and career readiness really through that Makerspace. So each year, over 800 students participate in really hands-on prototype building of a DNA double helix, for example, or designing and printing a self-supporting bridge. The Career Academy is a really special program here in the public schools with a $2.5 million federal grant through the full-service community schools. Serves over 110 students a year and offers that online learning, career internships, guest speakers. The first cohort of graduates from the Career Academy was this last spring, and they all received a Lowell High School diploma. The PALS mentoring program serves over 75 students a year, particularly 20, 25 to 30 sort of high-risk students who might not graduate otherwise. And you can see Sonia here on the left was a really talented artist who through the PALS program came from being, moving from another state. She had dropped out of school in Connecticut, came to Lowell High, got involved in PALS, and it really helped her develop the connections and support so that she could thrive. And now she was, she had sold some pieces of art, and she wants to study art therapy at Leslie. So we work with our alumni through our Lowell High Alumni Association, and you can see some distinguished alums. But we're really looking to develop long-term a campaign for education with our alumni so that we can sustain all of these programs in the future and in perpetuity. Your Voice Matters is, school community engagement is a really important priority, and it's one of the, it relates to one of the pillars of the strategic plan. And we really wanted to help support that and support the efforts. And so we've developed this project through Nellie Mae Education Foundation. We're doing community circles across the city. One tonight is over at CTI, as a matter of fact. And the goal is to build to a sort of a forum around education, but really to engage hundreds of families, parents, and students in, you know, what does it mean to be engaged in our schools, and how can we bring more of ourselves to support the effort with student achievement. So here's just a snapshot of our work supporting 24 schools, over 14,400 students, and we've brought in over 7 million raised specifically for Lowell Public Schools programming. Our vision is that by 2025, Lowell Public Schools has the best, bar none, urban education system in the nation. And of course, there are ways for folks to get involved if they want to be a guest speaker, or sponsor a project, host a book drive for our Book Nook project, or join our Alumni Association. I see some smiles around the room for those who have helped with book drives. And simple things like liking us on Facebook, spreading the word. But this is a kind of a groundbreaking organization here founded by Lowell civic and business leaders and philanthropists, and it's been really special, I think, for a lot of people to be involved in it. So it's a pleasure to present in front of all of you, and thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Elzinon for coming down here and giving us this presentation this evening. Project Learn is certainly a unique and special organization that we're lucky to have here in Lowell. I mean, $7 million funneled into our system. And $7 million, it does projects that we just couldn't touch. We couldn't come near because of the budget restrictions that we have. So we're very thankful for the work that all you folks do, and we look forward to helping you reach that goal of the best urban school district in America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank Elzinon and the folks at Project Learn and your board for being such tremendous partners with us. I think you guys are really a place for innovation in areas that we're unable to fund. So I thank you, and on behalf of the nearly 15,000 students we serve, they thank you as well.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
I was just going to go. Thank you so much for that presentation. I think this is a really important thing to have in the Lowell schools. It's a really great way to spark students' interests at a younger age and give them that foundation to have when they go on to LHS and they can participate in pathways, which gives them an interest and idea of what they want to do in college. And as a member of the National Honor Society, we've done a lot of work with the PALS program, with the student translators, and it's a really awesome support system, and it's made a lot of change. So those are two really important aspects of this program.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, move on to Lowell Promise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, I'm going to ask Dr. Mayberry, who is president of Middlesex Community College, who is part of the Lowell Promise of another partnership that we have with the schools. And I'll turn over the mic to him. Thank you, Mr. Mayberry.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for inviting me tonight. And it's a pleasure to present to the school committee here. Today, I'll be talking about the work Middlesex Community College has been doing with Project Learn, who you've just learned quite a bit about, UMass Lowell, the Lowell Public Schools, and community agencies to develop a Lowell Promise Plan that will strive to remove barriers to education and create the educated workforce that this community must have to support continued development. More than 200 Promise Plans in this country are dedicated to increasing educational opportunities and educational attainment levels throughout a community. Promise Plans are motivated by the idea that economic and urban development depends upon an educated workforce, and that is particularly true in Massachusetts. Over the next decade, they estimate that at least 60% of the new jobs will need a college degree. In Massachusetts, over 40% of the population have college degrees. But the educated workforce, like many resources, is very unevenly distributed across the state. In Lowell, just under 22% of the population have a degree. So if Lowell is to attract families and businesses and remain competitive in the high-tech economy, it will need a highly educated workforce. And an educated workforce has many advantages because educated workers earn more, they pay more in taxes, they are much more civically engaged, they get married and form families in higher rates, and they are healthier, happier, and live longer. So bottom line, an educated workforce is necessary to build a great city. Lowell has the key components for a successful Promise Program. We have a large unified school district. We have a strong community college and a thriving public university. One key fact to remember is that students who go to public higher education institutions stay in the state at much higher rates. So if you want to build a solid workforce, educate the kid next door. We can always import PhDs, but the core of the workforce is always homegrown. And as recent events show, people in the city care deeply about public education. And Lowell is already an educational hub, but it is not enough. And we also need strong support from the city and the community to take this to the next level. So I want to pause here just for a second and see if we can get a quick video up.
I promise to learn and be kind to others. I promise to be good at my abilities. I promise to be a advocate and cheerleader for all Lowell Public Schools students.
I promise to help each student be successful in their way. I promise to increase the awareness of your great accomplishments among Lowell Public Schools students.
I promise to advocate for the immigrants and minorities of the Lowell Public Schools.
I promise to develop and creation of a nurturing, engaging, and challenging environment for our students, families, and health.
I promise to use the passion and respect that I have here, and everything I do is to do this with the best of the passion.
I promise to support and teach as much science to the students as possible.
I promise to be more positive.
I promise to be an active volunteer.
I promise to support the community in cleavage and search and education of all students in Lowell community.
I promise to be the best of myself each and every day as instructional leader to help our students and our teachers, teacher, and mentor.
I promise to be a leader. I promise to be confident.
I promise to always create a network to be strong, case to be held.
I promise to be a leader.
I promise to make all of our efforts.
As I learned a long time ago, your students will always sell it better than you can. The Lowell Promise Plan is focused on fostering and supporting urban economic development and really supporting this great gateway city and helping to promote a strong public education system when it builds a workforce with 21st century skills that will be the essential fuel to power development in the next century. We are inviting the community work with us and support our efforts to build a highly educated workforce in this great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming here this evening, President Mayberry. Any discussion? Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, how lucky are we to have organizations like Middlesex Community College and UMass Lowell here in Lowell, right in the city of Lowell, to not only offer those opportunities to our community, but to partner with the Lowell school system and making our system better as well. So thank you for coming down here, and I promise to do all I can to help you in your efforts in that goal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Martin?
This is another really great resource. Sometimes you see a lot of kids who maybe aren't too sure how to go to college, and this could be a really great, an engaging resource for them to get that final push and make that big jump and next step in their life.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next report. It is on class size, district-wide. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask Mrs. Durkin to talk about the class size.
Yes, thank you. This is a report in response to school committee member Gignac's request for updates relative to the class size in the district and some of the anomalies that showed up in our district reporting online. And since that time, there are specific scheduling issues that were addressed specifically at the schools. And so that you'll see that the class size in those particular areas that were of concern are down to 27, 27, 20, 26 at this time. Overall, our class sizes are within range, and there are a few middle schools that have class-sized enrollments that are a bit over 30. Some of those are special programs which can maintain a class size that is larger than that, our allied arts programs. Additionally, some principals have made specific recommendations based on the student population and to make sure that it works for each of the classes at this time.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Deputy Durkin, for providing this in a timely fashion. I also just want to thank you and the principals and your team for addressing the concerns that I brought up at previous meetings. I know a number of them were just simply scheduling issues, and new leadership and some turnover required a little more thought, and those have been addressed. Obviously, we want to stay in line and decrease these class sizes. I know we're awaiting the MCAS results, and from preliminary data, you can see some of the areas we're not doing as well as we'd like to are the areas that we have very large class sizes. So that's something we should just keep an eye on. I thank you for the timely response.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to the next report, which is the translation for Channel 22 educational programs. Any discussion regarding that? Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have also a motion, which was again from Mr. Gignac, on translation of Channel 22. And I know we have Mr. Jack Pinar here. If you would like to come to the mic, please, and talk a little bit about this proposal.
Good evening, everybody. So in response to the motion, we did look at four or five different agencies that do provide this, and it quickly became apparent, there are a number of layers in that work. If you take an example of a one-hour program, for example, that you'd want to translate into Spanish, first, that complete one hour has to be transcribed into the target language. Secondly, it then needs to be translated. And thirdly, it then needs to be spoken, recorded, by somebody who is obviously fluent in that language. Once those pieces have been done, that newly-recorded audio then has to be married to the existing video. So all in all, it becomes a considerable amount of work. So we did do some budget ideas from four or five different groups, and the averages came out, they mainly do it by finished minute of programming. And the estimates came in somewhere between 13 minutes and up to 23, $13 per finished minute, I'm sorry, and $23 as a high, which was mainly for Kamai language translations, which apparently are harder to come by. And the reason being, any English-language colloquialisms or other things that don't translate necessarily directly become an issue. So in any event, with that said, a one-hour show, say, a meeting such as this, to be translated into a target language, in two target languages, would be $2,160. Again, it's a very specialized field, and unfortunately, it takes a considerable amount of work to do that. So that's as far as we went with it. We assumed that doing that on any sort of scale would be a prohibitive thing, but obviously, that's why we're here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jack, for providing this report. I know there was a grant written through the Working Cities, and Ms. Martin's a part of that, but I believe they received a grant for $30,000, $40,000 to do this for city council meetings. Have you communicated with LTC?
Well, there's two separate pieces. I do know LTC provides closed captioning for city council meetings, which is a completely different and somewhat easier situation.
Did you explore that?
That's very, that's very much a subscription service, which is about $10,000 a year. And basically, what that entails is much simpler. Somebody, much like would happen in a court of law, takes, as it happens, types it out, and then it is produced and put on the bottom of the screen. So that's a completely different process. That's actually not quite as involved.
Sure. Can you just speak with the folks at LTC to see what they're planning on rolling out for the city council exactly? Because ideally, I think we should mirror that for the school committee and try to roll it out at a similar time. And we have a lot of subcommittee meetings, so we can maybe pilot it through some of those subcommittees where it's not live presently.
Sure.
But thank you for this update. I think it's something that we should strive for. I know it's expensive and it's a lot of work, but our constituency is, or not all English-speaking speakers, and even our student population. So I think we should move toward providing more avenues to provide information to our staff, students, and constituents. So thank you, and I look forward to hearing more about what we can do.
I will do that, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
I was just going to bring up the same topic with the Working Cities grant that they had received for the council meeting, translation services, that hopefully, I would hope we'd be able to piggyback on that and be able to at least provide the same level of service to school committee meetings. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, move on to evaluating the district-wide absence procedures. Mr. Superintendent?
I think we had a, I apologize. I just realized there was a printing error. And I want to ask, did you get that on the electronic version? Or did we have the same error on the electronic version? It was on the electronic. So if it were, it's up to you, but if you have read it on the electronic version, Deputy Durkin is ready to speak about it.
Thank you, Dr. Kelfawy. This report is provided in response to following requests by school committee member Jackie Doherty during the October 4, 2017 school committee meeting, requesting that we review the school district's internal protocols to improve the safety net when parents don't answer the phone and a message is left about an absence. So the current procedures for contacting parents in the event of students absent are being evaluated at this time. And so in order to really come up with a good, solid plan for going forward, here's what we've done thus far. So we're reviewing and adjusting the times for the blackboard connecting So, we're reviewing and adjusting the times for the blackboard connected calls that are automatically going out to schools. We've already put in a purchase order because our current blackboard connect calls go out at 11:10 daily and at 5:00 p.m. So, we are contracting with Aspen to adjust those so that they will be school-specific, so that if a school starts at 7:30 within the hour, the calls will go out at that school. If a school starts at 9:30, the calls would go out by 10:20, 10:30. So, that PO is in the works, and they will be providing us with the reports so that we can get that out to our schools very soon. So, that's one thing. Additionally, we're surveying our principals in all our schools, too, and I believe we have just about every school in thus far, and we're looking at what procedures they use. So, how do they notify families about, informing about school attendance and reporting absences? So, we know that many of our schools do a really wonderful job at the start of the school year of saying to families, "Please call us to notify us if your child is going to be absent." And then we also know that our schools will check that up against their list of absences, and then they know how many calls to make. So, some of the schools currently are also making calls home besides those connected calls. So, one of the things that we're going to have a discussion with all of our principals about is sharing out the data that we have gained from all of them, and then coming up with some protocols going forward about how we're going to do that. Additionally, for working with the bus companies that transport our students to ensure that we have the personnel onboard that needs to be onboard, our monitors. Additionally, at the school site end of it, we're looking at how can we better support the bus companies in addressing the drop-offs and the pickups? So, we're trying out some systems in schools right now, and we'll have a full report to you within the month.
Any discussion? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is the STEM Academy at the Rogers instructional time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the principal and Deputy Durkin worked together on this. The principal apologizes he's not here. He's had an accident, and he's recovering at home for a few weeks, so he apologized for not being here, but I'll ask Deputy Durkin again to tell us a little bit of her work with the principal.
So, this is in response to the request by school committee member Jackie Doherty during the September 20, 2017, school committee meeting, requesting that the superintendent provide information about the instructional learning time for students in grades five and six from the STEM Academy at the Rogers School in comparison to other middle schools district-wide. So, what you have in your report is the overall laws, Mass. General laws, relative to elementary and middle school instructional learning time. And so, an elementary school, according to the state, is designated for schools that provide instruction to grades one through five, six, seven, or eight, where it's designated. And then a secondary school, she'll mean a school providing instruction to students in six through 12, or any combination thereof. So, we have middle schools in Lowell, but they, according to the state, fall within that secondary realm. So, schools that are elementary are required to have a schedule to receive a minimum of 900 hours. Those that are secondary are 990 hours. The STEM Academy at the Rogers, as well as all of our schools in Lowell, meet those requirements for instructional learning time as required by the law. There is no separate policy at this present time relative to student learning in the Lowell public schools as a district adheres to Mass. General law. I'd like to thank Jason McCreevan, the principal of the Rogers, because he provided you with the schedule of the school, and he was prepared to share with you specifically how the school operates. But when you look at the instructional learning time worksheets that are provided by our schools, we just submitted those to the state for our coordinated program review, and they do have quite a range, even within our middle schools at this time, because there is, it's set forth, instructionally, the timeframe and the schedules are set forth by the principals, but they all do meet that state regulation.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Doherty.
Thank you for that report. Just a quick follow-up. So, I understand we're meeting the state requirements. So, if I understand what you just said, our middle schools are not all getting the same amount of instructional time. They're all meeting the state requirements, but in terms of across the city, you might have different amounts of time that middle school students are spending in schools.
In their core subjects. That's correct.
So, if I could, just to understand, one of the ways that the Rogers School is maybe taking advantage of a shorter day, let's put it that way, is they're doing the homeroom block before the tardy bell rings, right? So, that cuts 15 minutes. But if I understand the report, the allied arts piece, they're not getting as much allied arts time. They're getting the 40 minutes, which is what the elementary schools get, where our middle schools typically get 60 minutes. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
So, that does differentiate between our middle schools as well. So, additionally, at an elementary level versus middle level, the middle level has common planning time, and so the elementary can do more time on the core subjects. So, that's how he's worked his schedule out. And I'm sure that this is going to be an opportunity for us when we receive feedback from the state relative to their review of our schedules, and we certainly will take all of that into consideration. But we were very careful to review and make sure that we were aligned with what we need to provide all students.
Can I follow one more? Sorry. So, do we have a range of how much it varies between our middle schools? If we're saying that not all middle schools get the same amount of instructional time, they all meet the state requirements, which is fine, but I mean, there's a certain amount of, I think, equity we would want for all our schools. So, what is the range?
Right. So, we look at ranges from like the 9, 9, 910, 920, to a little over 1,000, 1,020.
So, you could have some schools getting 1,020 hours of instruction and another school getting 910 hours of instruction.
At present, that is what we have.
Do we have a policy about?
No, there is not a policy in place at this time.
Would that be something that you would recommend to us, or do you think that?
We could certainly look into that and investigate that with our leaders and the superintendent and review other districts and see what's out there. But we've always, as a community adhered, just utilized the Mass. General law.
You follow the state standard. So, I'm just wondering, and honestly, this is my last question, if there is a reason to not have consistency, if that gives us something that we're not losing on the other end? Because on the face of it, to look at, well, one middle school, fifth-grade classroom or one strand at a specific middle school gets 1,020 hours of instruction a year, while another middle school gets 900, it does seem off. So, I'm looking for some reasoning about why that is beneficial, or why it wouldn't be, or I don't know if you have any thoughts, either of you, at this point on that?
So, we can work with our, we can certainly work with our principals, and it has been, it's something that was brought forward to my attention last year when we submitted our coordinator review documentation in late May, and so it's something that we certainly can work with our leaders on and have a discussion about, and come back to you with some recommendations.
Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree with Ms. Doherty. I think it would be good to understand the differential, if nothing else. And maybe there are good reasons. You know, maybe giving principals the freedom to do things differently is a good thing, or maybe, you know, the STEM school does things differently than an art school. So, I'm not saying that we need to be consistent, but it would be good to know what the variation is all about.
Certainly, I can get that to you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this report? If not, we'll move on to the next report, which is the alternative options for special transportation services. We have four speakers registered. If there's no objection, we'll hear from the superintendent and the report first, then the four speakers, and then the school committee. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand this is the second meeting. The previous meeting, I wasn't able to be here. The previous meeting was a report presented by our Assistant Superintendent of Finance, and it is, as I had explained previously, we have several contracts. This is a separate contract from our main transportation. And before the incident that we had, I know that our finance department was looking at various alternatives. This contract has been going on for a long time, was never bidded or was never really looked at. It was continued to be a repeat. I know that it was reported to me, and I have the file here, that they had several issues with the administration of this contract, issues that pertain to sometimes directly related to students, like missing monitors, constantly principals reporting that monitors, as required through the IEP of certain students, were not there, and there were a lot of complaints reported to the administration of this company, and really, most of them go unanswered. And as a result of that, Mr. Frisch had started looking at other alternatives, and presented to you last time one of them. Since then, we had another transportation company, so now we have three, actually, including SPNR into consideration, and we have NRT as well, which I believe are present here, and we have Pride Star, which I'm not sure whether they're here or not. They are here, who also are interested in this. We have given you all the information on the three companies, and it goes back to you to making the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. So, the first speaker?
Mr. Daniel Gladette.
Yeah, I wanted to say, I was here last time talking and everything, and there was a subject brought up before about us being on time and everything. Well, we get numbers of people. We make phone calls. We don't know if the parents are going to actually be there or not, or if the child is actually going to the school. And a lot of the kids that we got this year, some of them didn't even go to that school. Things were messed up, you know? We don't know why. There was kids that didn't belong at one school that we went to. They belonged at another school. But for time and stuff, we're told to wait three minutes when we get to a place. We wait our three minutes. So, if you add that up and stuff, and you wait for three minutes at one spot, and then you've got to wait three minutes at another spot, you know, a lot of people don't realize and stuff, there's a lot involved. Then the other thing is, we deal with special-needs kids. Nobody takes in consideration, you're looking into another company, a lot of us drivers, we've been with these kids for a good many years, you know, and for change with these kids, it's going to affect them, you know? And then the other thing is, the other subject was about what would implement new things for some of the kids. Well, lately, there's been a person going around and checking the buses when the drivers get back, double-checking, you know, to make sure there's nobody on the bus. And we're going to implement other strategies, like the bus drivers either calling in and letting us know that their buses have been checked, their signs are in the window, you know, the whole nine yards. I mean, you know, things do happen, you know? Like I said last time, nobody's perfect, you know? But us bus drivers, we work hard for what we do. But everybody hops into things and tries to make a decision on, you know, while they're not a good company. We are a good company. We all work together as a team, you know? But for, to judge somebody, you don't do that, you know? Nobody here knows what it's like to actually drive and try to get from point A to point B. I'm a driver. I drive all over town, and just to do one school, it's hard. We've got a lot of traffic. Nobody figures that out. You've got U Lowell, you know? You've got more kids in the school now, too, in the school system, you know? There's all these things that you take in consideration, because there was a lot of comments made at the beginning of the year that we didn't do a good job. Well, to tell you the truth, I really think we did do a good job. We tried our hardest. But you try to make phone calls to parents, and then you've got wrong numbers and everything, so what are you supposed to do? You've still got to show up at a house and pray that that person's there, but you don't know, because you've got a wrong number, but you've got to wait three minutes for that person, you know? So, I really think that you really need to rethink things over, you know? I mean, it's like, everybody's judging that we're a bad company and stuff, we're bad people and everything. No, we're not. I think we do a full, you know, 100% with our jobs. I really do, you know? I mean, I've been a bus driver, and there's even parents here tonight.
Excuse me, we've got a three-minute limit.
Well, I didn't know my time was up, so, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Lynda Gaff.
Hi. I am here speaking behalf of SPNR. My name is Lynda Gaff. I've been driving school buses in Lowell for 23 years, big and small, currently with SPNR for 11 years. I'm a Lowell resident, and I vote in Lowell. Now, we had a driver do the unthinkable, leave a child on a bus for three and a half hours. All drivers are affected by this, a worse nightmare. We all feel very deeply about it, and thank God the child is safe. We are good people. We are core rechecked once a year, randomly drug-tested throughout the year, trained time and time again, and lots of other things, and child safety is the number-one issue. Now, the city wants to fire SPNR. SPNR did not leave a child on the bus. It was an honest, hard-working driver. SPNR had no idea this would happen, just as others in the same situation would not have. We at SPNR have taken measures to help us understand the children's needs and to deal with them. Also, I, as many others, have awesome rapport with the parents. This is a good thing. The school bus industry knows that the first month of school is the most confusing for everyone, parents, children, drivers, and, yes, teachers. We are faced with new kids, new addresses, new drivers, not enough drivers, constant changes, and bad information. At SPNR, we get to work, and we get the job done. Why? Because we have a great team that works well together and goes far and beyond to get these kids to school safely in the most timely manner possible. We love our kids and take great care of them. We take pride in what we do. We get the money thing, but if you put all your eggs in one basket, although that's not going to happen now because you have a second company coming in here tonight that wants to possibly bid, but before this meeting, there was going to be one. If the contract went to Mr. McCarthy, you would have one person to bid every year, and you would have to take his bid because there is nobody else to go in with him. So, I wonder how much would the city be saving, if anything at all, if this ever came about? Ending the contract at this point of time would be a total disruption to the parents, drivers, and most of all, our children. I should reconsider and look further into this before change, if any is made. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Covellucci.
Please let me introduce myself. I am Billy Covellucci, co-owner of SPNR Transportation. I want to stop by saying how sorry we are at SPNR about the terrible mistake made by one of our drivers on September 25, 2017. He is distraught and extremely remorseful. We are thankful that the outcome was not worse and the child is safe. Safety has always been and always will be a number-one concern of everyone working for SPNR. I am here to ask that SPNR be allowed to continue our transportation until the end of the school year in June with a reevaluation at that time. This would avoid another startup for the children and the families of Lowell. SPNR- SPNR has been transporting Lowell's children for 12 years, and TransCom, owned by my family, transported Lowell's children since the early 90s. Our longstanding history and commitment is a testament to the service we provide. Many SPNR drivers live in Lowell and have been with SPNR since inception. They are loving and caring people that are dedicated to the children of Lowell and our company. They are not only employees, but members of our extended family. I am per, I personally feel very connected to Lowell and support the many businesses. I do my own banking personally and professionally in Lowell as well. As with any transportation company, there is always startup issues that require special attention, especially with the amount of information shared and the changes that occur with the children. We transport about 800 children per day, totaling around 1,600 individual stops per day, as well as the school drop-offs. Since school has started, we have had 210 changes and more being received daily. In addition, rescheduling drivers to pick up children from 26 different schools, some of which are across town, and a very short time can be very challenging. Unlike the larger bus that have set pickup locations for multiple children, these are house-to-house pickups, of most with, for one child at a time. I have worked diligently to meet every problem as soon as possible in the most efficient and safe manner. We continually train the drivers and try to ensure that nothing like this happens, but unfortunately, human error was involved. I personally would hate to see my longstanding relationship with the Lowell school system end, but my primary concern is for my drivers, operating staff, and the children of Lowell. This unprecedented termination would be very disruptive to the families and the children of Lowell. Again, the incident on September 25th was terrible, but it does not justify premature termination of a contract and disrupting the families of Lowell and the many Lowell residents employed by SPNR. That being said, if the contract is terminated prematurely, SPNR would have to retain our drivers through the termination date to avoid any disruption in the transportation. So again, I ask that we are allowed to continue until June 2018 with a reeval, reevaluation of service at that time, for the benefit of the residents, families, drivers, and most importantly, the children of Lowell. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. John McCarthy.
Good evening. First off, I want to say that this isn't about the drivers and the monitors of SPNR. I just met with the Lieutenant Governor this morning about the serious problem that we have in the school bus industry right now, with retaining and having school bus drivers drive and fill the routes that we so desperately need to be filled. It's a, is a daunting task. Billy and I spoke, and I spoke with his mother prior to this meeting. Whatever your decision is tonight, we will make sure that the safety of the Lowell children is first, and that the drivers that are sitting in this room, again, it is not about them nor the monitors that's at question. It will be a daunting task. If you choose to turn this over in January to a company that, this is my company, we have done this prior. We were called to do this about three years ago in the town of Hudson, where a community lost their vendor, which was Atlantic Express. In three weeks, they asked us to produce the vehicles, the drivers, and take over the community. We did that. If you ask my preference tonight, what I think, if you were asking my opinion, I would let this go to June. That would be my preference. I would think that it would be in the best interest of the children and everybody involved here tonight to do that. But if you choose, based on the information that you have in front of you, that the safety and the administration of this company is what is questioned, then I accept your decision, and I will do what I need to do to make sure your children get transported quietly and safely to school. Thank you.
Thank you. That, that ends the speakers. I'm starting.
I think, Your Honor, I, I would definitely like to finish out this school year, and I, I tell you, I've got a couple of reasons. One, when we talk about, we've got a history with this company, if there were some bumpy things with the start of the school year, well, we had a change with our transportation director at the start of the school year, and I know we were scrambling at the last minute, so to think about drivers going to schools and finding that's not the right school for the student, I mean, I can imagine that there was some role we might have played in that confusion at the beginning of the year. Secondly, I, I would call my colleagues' attention to the letter from Jennifer McChrystal, and where she did talk about some concerns with timing and things like that. But one of the things that jumped out at me is that many of these special education students, they know the drivers. They have a comfort level with getting into a vehicle and going to school, and I really don't want to disrupt that, that, that there's a relationship there, and I, so I, I feel that, and, and the third one is, we haven't, I haven't had time to read the latest bid, because it was emailed this morning, and I was at work. So I don't even know, really, the full extent of what's in front of us, and I, so I wouldn't be comfortable to vote on it tonight, but I, I feel very strongly that unless there's some need to make an immediate decision, that I think we should go through the rest of the school year, I'm open to hear what other, other people's thoughts and concerns, and reevaluate at that time. That would be, I would make that in the form of a motion to delay a decision until a reevaluation occurs after the school year.
All right, so Ms. Doherty is offering a motion to, to delay action until June and reevaluate the situation in June. Is there a second to the motion?
I'd second for the purposes of discussion.
Second by Ms. Martin. Discussion on the motion.
Can we continue with some additional questions about the?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Can I do that myself? Could you explain for us kind of the, the difference in procedures? Our traditional bidding procedures are such that we do not have meetings like this. So when, when this was initially bid out, does the special ed transportation have some kind of additional caveat that, that doesn't follow the Massachusetts bidding laws?
Yes.
Great. Could you explain those for us?
Well, in the regular transportation, you, you do a regular bidding. In the special educa, special transportation, which by the way, we do not transport only special ed, also specially challenged students as well. They do not follow the same bidding laws, that's why we never bidded that, and, and you're allowed to, because of the special circumstances. And that's much, it's, it's a very different business in some ways, because the regular transportation, as one of the speakers has spoken, you have specific drop-offs, you have big buses, you have, you can plan that. In the special education, special, special transportation, you could just call them, and Mrs. McChrystal can call them, the company tomorrow, and say, "I need, you know, these two more kids going to this different direction." So they have to come up with a really quick solution, and sometimes we, we had to go to other companies when they, when they can't. And so it's totally different.
I just wanted to make sure people were aware that that's why this is a unique circumstance. Additionally, so I'm assuming there's also, I've seen it, the, the language that allows us greater flexibility in ending the contract?
Yes, this was verified with the city's, by Mr. Frisch.
And what were the terms of, of our flexibility in that?
I think it's a 30-day, if I remember well, and it was in the report of Mr. Frisch. Yeah.
You know, again, I think that our, our situation would be best served by allowing us to complete the school year and then be able to put this open for a true bid process. I understand that we've had the flexibility of not having to go through that, but I do think that we all get better information when things are done in a more open sense, and that, you know, if, perhaps that's the lesson we can learn from this. But, so my preference at this point would be to allow the contract to remain in force through the end of June, but to directly instruct the administration that we'd be looking for a much more open process as we went through this, so that we would be able to make comparisons as to service levels. I think we all recognize that there was one extreme circumstance that, that we all have reacted to, but in a, in a more measured process, we'd be able to look across the board at performance, and, and certainly cost, and, and all the other aspects that go into this kind of a contract, and I think be able to make a better reasoned choice at that point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no problem waiting until June or July to actually award it to another vendor, if necessary, but Ms. Doherty pointed out a letter that I requested from, from the special education director, and I noticed, I noticed something different in that letter, and then what I noticed is that it said, "The issue around SPNR's reliability and follow-through has caused me to increasingly rely and recommend Pride Star and NRT to transport SPNR students." And so it's a recommendation of the special edu, education department to request other options. So I rely heavily on the professionals in the special education department, Student Support Services, as well as, as the rest of the folks in the administration, so I am fine with waiting until June, but I, I think perhaps it's more of a management issue with the vendors, and I think we should seek another opportunity. And I was interested in the Pride Star proposal, because they transport students in a different capacity. Mr. Superintendent, can you talk about our relationship with them presently? Just so.
Actually, I'm going to ask our Director of Special Education, she probably knows more about that. Jennifer McChrystal.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to clarify. First of all, I do want to say the bus drivers are amazing, and as a teacher, I'm always amazed at what they do for our students, and show up every day, and really help a very challenging group of students get to and from school safely, and I completely appreciate that. And in my letter, I had indicated that I've spoken to the special education packed parents who do have relationships with the bus drivers, and their students are familiar with the routines and everybody there, and those parents said, "If, if there's going to be a change, let's make it a thoughtful change, so that the students can be prepared with visuals and social stories, and know what's going to happen if their life is going to be different." To answer your question, we have had some administration issues with SPNR, things around ensuring that there are bus monitors, that students are arriving on time, and we also have students with very specific needs, and so I've reached out, for example, North Reading, they did a special bus run for me at 9:00 after all the other children were in school, so we could get this one little guy used to going on the bus, so that Dad could get a job and go to work, and that was fabulous. Pride Star has been amazing for us. We have several students who require nursing services, so we were able to work with Pride Star, meet with the parents, have conversations around what it would be like to have Pride Star transport our students with an EMT. And the parents were very comfortable. We've had lots of very positive feedback about that model, and it's met the needs of the students and families. They're also transporting a few of our kiddos who've really struggled with SPNR transportation. We've had parents request that the student have a car because of physical issues, and a van shows up, and then they cry, and the parents get upset. And a lot of times, because I stand here in front of you, always talking about compliance, my job is to make sure that the students are able to get to school and access their services, and when they're late, or the parents then have the right to request compensatory services. Several of them have request mileage, if they've had to bring the children themselves, and we've had a few complaints to the state where they've asked for their wages to be compensated, which in those cases where parents feel like their trust has been broken, we've reached out to the other transportation companies to kind of help fill that void, and Pride Star has been great in sitting down with the parents, talking to them, and because they also have another aspect to their business, which is working with kids with autism, they also have special training for kids with behavior, which often, as was stated, these are kids with pretty significant needs. There's sometimes biting and spitting and all of that, and Pride Star has worked on the training pieces, so that it's not as alarming sometimes when those things happen. So we've used a continuum of services to make sure each of our students' individual needs are being met, and I don't envy any decision that you all have to make. We would continue to try to utilize a variety of services to ensure that the students' individual needs are being met.
Thank you. Are you all set, Mr. Gignac?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hoy.
Mayor, I, I feel like this situation, my wife drove a bus for 20 years. This isn't about bus drivers, this is about the company that hires the bus drivers. I think we've had a lot of busing issues in Lowell this year. I think it's time for us not to delay this. I think we do have a motion on the floor, but I think we should accept Pride Star's offer and let them take over in July of 2018. So I would first caution all of you, let's vote on that first motion, and if that doesn't go, I'd like to make a motion that we accept Pride Star's offer. And I think it's, it's an important issue. The bus drivers, I know how they feel, they think, "I'm going to lose, I'm going to lose my job." I think that's the farthest thing from the truth. They're going to, we're going to need all the bus drivers we can get. We're just trying to, I'm trying to change a company, and I think it's time for us to put our foot down, that nothing like this happens in any other capacity in the school system. If they forget a child on a bus for that long, we have to act, and I think that's the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation on how we should proceed here? And you, you brought this forward, right? You brought the initial suggestion forward. I'm wondering what your thoughts are on this.
Well, my, my thoughts are that the, yeah, I'm not, this is not about the drivers, all right? First and foremost, because I hear a lot of from parents, that they're very close to drivers, and the drivers do, a lot of the drivers do a wonderful job. We have over hundreds and hundreds of teachers, it's the same thing. When you hear of something bad, it's not about all the teachers. It's usually few teachers who do, don't do their job well, and then they give all the teachers a bad name. Ninety-nine percent of the teachers do a great job, ninety-nine percent of the parents do a great job. But I don't think this is even about the drivers, even about the ones that do that. This is about this. To me, if you're asking me as a superintendent, these things like this should not exist. I should not have a file of over 30 pages of emails going back and forth on issues that remain unresolved, because these are special educations, we have compliance here with the state that we have to deal with, and we cannot, you know, one little mistake, and this district can be in for millions and millions of dollars. This isn't even about money. This is about, about the safety of children, and, and I know that our, ninety-nine percent of our drivers are great, and they do a wonderful job, but I'd like to see this, this, my recommendation is I want to see this file disappear. I want it to be resolved. This is not a regular transportation. Regular transportation, we can have some, some leeway, and, and, you know, allow some flexibility, but not in this kind of transportation. So if, could accidents happen like this? Of course they could. We're all humans, and we all make mistakes, but these are not accidents. These, when you have constant communication within the Department of Transportation, Department of, of a family that was notified to pick up, to, to come and pick up their kid, and a wrong family was called, while the right family is waiting somewhere else, and, and now I have two sets of parents going nuts, trying to figure out what happened to their children, only because somebody did not pay attention when calling the number? This is what, my recommendation, make this file disappear. And I have, I have no problem recommending that we go to June 30 and have a thorough reevaluation, but please take it very seriously. I'm, my recommendation will be categorical. If we have, again, this, my recommendation stands, let's change the company. But if you want to go to June 30, I'm happy to recommend that, but I want to have a very serious revaluation of, of this. This is not about the drivers, this is about the administration of the transportation company, and I want to see that resolved. And again, I don't know these people, I don't, I have never met you before, and this is not personal in any way. To me, the kids come ahead of everybody else. They come ahead of me, they come ahead of you, they come ahead of the drivers. I want them to be safe. I want this file to disappear.
And from a financial standpoint? And from a financial standpoint, when we talked last, there was a financial savings in switching.
Well, I think from a financial standpoint, I think it's, as Ms. Martin said, even though the law allows us to bid, not to have to bid this, I think she makes a lot of sense. This is a big project and we should, we should be transparent and we should allow for bidding on this one.
Yes. Well, I mean, obviously, this isn't about one incident. I mean, there was one horrible incident that brought this to a head. But obviously, there's a file of issues. And we are talking about special ed students. And I will, you know, agree, this is not about drivers, this is not personal. We have a district to run. This is an important thing. We have our Director of Special Ed here talking about reliability issues. We have a file of issues that we've had to deal with, with this company. You know, the fact that the Superintendent brought this before us says to me, this is serious enough where we should take a serious look at making a change here. You know, so, you know, I am, I am open to making a change based on the information that I've gotten from you. I mean, I want to hear what the rest of my colleagues have to say, but I think the situation is serious enough where we need to send a message that, you know, we're not going to accept this type of, not going to accept this type of service. We need somebody who's going to be reliable, have the equipment that makes these types of errors less likely on the buses. And, you know, so I'm open to that discussion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Could I ask if we've been able to determine what the dramatic difference is between last year and this year? What would have changed between last year when you were comfortable moving forward with the same company? What happened in the administration that changed?
I'll have to wait until I ask the Transportation Department unless you have, oh, Jennifer is here, might then address some of that.
Thank you.
So, to be honest, we've used Pride Star last year as, we've used both companies, North Reading as well, for other issues last year. This has been ongoing with SPNR, and we've put in additional systems in place to try to rectify it. So, for example, there would be a paperwork issue, which as was stated at the beginning of the year, it's very difficult and challenging to place all of these students in different schools. And sometimes team meetings are happening and things need to switch. And we were having issues with paperwork where we would say to the parents, "We've sent it to the transportation company." The parents would call, they'd say they never received it. So we switched our procedures so that we had an email trail to say we sent it on this day. And we've been working with them to put systems in place to help the paperwork pieces of the job go smoother. And so we've been working on this for several years. And then in the cases where parents had persistent complaints that we weren't able to address, that's when we started reaching out to Pride Star and North Reading Transportation to help us address some different issues with parents once their trust was broken.
Are you all set? Any further discussion? Mr. Gendron.
Ms. McChrystal, while you're at the mic, so on these occasions when you have issues that have to be dealt with and you have to reach out to another company, does that cost us? We have to pay for that, I assume?
Yes.
In addition to the contract that we're paying SPNR, we have to pay additional money to address the situation?
Right, right. And we do, North Reading right now does all of our out-of-district transportation. And so...
We reduced your costs by $500,000 by doing outside transportation.
That's another issue altogether.
Yeah.
No, 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 I'm just saying, it wasn't that high a cost, you said that. We didn't actually reduce...
All right. The question is, when we have an issue?
When we have an issue.
SPNR is not working out for some reason. We have to reach out to NRT or Pride Star. We have to pay additional money over and above the contract that we have in place with SPNR.
Yes, that's correct. And I do know that Pride Star's here as well, and I know they didn't sign up to speak, but I just want to let you know they're represented here in the audience as well. But we do pay an extra cost.
Did Pride Star want to come up? Is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Well, Mr. Gendron still has the floor.
Sure. I'm done. I relinquish.
Mr. Gignac?
No, I was just going to mention, if Pride Star wants to come forward, that's what Ms. McChrystal was mentioning.
Hi, everyone. My name is David Daley. I'm the CEO and founder of Pride Star EMS, headquarters in Lowell, Mass. on 229 Stedman Street. I didn't want to register the vote. There's a precarious situation going on here. I didn't want to get into a hornet's nest. I can only tell you something that is really legitimate here tonight. I look around at these employees and I think about my own employees and I think about how much they care. And I think about how much compassion is in this room. And I can only say to everyone, this is the type of employees that we would want to have at Pride Star EMS. It's the type of employees that have made us successful. It's the type of employees like this that have grown our company from seven employees in 2006 to over 300 employees today. We take pride in that. And these people here today take pride in their jobs. And that's what we want to share with the students of Lowell. And that's what we've been doing with the citizens, with the students of Lowell, the administration, and numerous towns and cities around here. And I want to make something really kind of abundantly clear here. Not only, we're an ambulance company. Last year, a year and a half ago, we started the Autism Center, which specifically specializes in autism and behavioral issues. These are the kids that we transport every day. Right now, we're talking about busing. And there's a busing contract and there's a special education contract. There's a reason why those two contracts are split. And there's a reason why a company like Pride Star EMS has been called upon to take these children. It's because that's what we do each and every day. Not only do we service some of the most difficult behavioral children in the city and the surrounding towns, but we take kids on vents, our paramedics take kids on ventilators who need medications every day. We are the contracted providers for the two biggest pediatric nursing homes in Groton and Burke, I don't want to say them out loud. We have the contracted provider for the Lowell General Hospital, both campuses. We have staff working within those hospitals. What we do is provide specialized transportation. There are two unique needs here. And tonight, we're talking about the special education. There is no other company in this whole entire state, I am telling you right now, that is more qualified, the services contract. I do believe, I would like to see tonight a vote taken that would potentially, you know, give us some time to take over the contract. We have all the ability to do that, but I do agree with the fact that, you know, this would be having an effect on these students. And we're really much, at the end of the day, that's what's important here. So we want to make sure that that transition is made in a way that doesn't disrupt these children. We do it every day. We know how important that is. And I just want to say to the City Council, thank you for considering us. And I can tell you, if you choose us, you're going to be the best choice you made in a number of years. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the school committee.
Sorry, school committee.
Mr. Gignac. Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. I just wanted to make one final point for me. I think we've heard from the, you know, the three bus companies represented here that they all understand that giving ourselves the rest of the school year and giving them the rest of the school year makes a certain amount of sense. And I would also remind everyone what my colleague, Ms. Martin, pointed out, that when we go through this process to really do it as a bid process where we're looking at specifically what we're going to get and what the costs will be, instead of rushing into something where we haven't had the time to really make a thoughtful decision and think very thoughtfully about the transition piece as well. So I would, again, would ask for your support on the motion that's on the floor. I think it is the best way to go forward. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Gendron.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wonder if I could ask Mr. Daley a question? We had the owner of NRT here suggesting that even though he would like the business, the best thing to do would be to wait till the end of the school year to minimize disruption. Do you feel the same way?
Well, I think we'd have to work in conjunction with the school department to make that happen. Could we do it in the next, I know that there was some discussion in January. That could definitely happen. I think both companies would have some asset issues that they'd have to procure, whether or not that could be worked out. But at the end of the day, if we were awarded that contract in the next, you know, to start after the new school year, we could do that. But I think the most important thing, as I've outlined, is working with the students and working with the administration to make sure that there's a transition that's seamless for the students and the employees, and there's no hardship on these kids.
Can I ask one more question? Actually, I wanted to ask you, sir, Billy, a question, if you don't mind. Your buses currently are not equipped with the systems that allow, that force the driver to go back and, you know, hit the door.
When we negotiated that contract, it was not something that they specified that they wanted at that time.
So will you change that?
I could change that if it was something that was going to stay until the end of the school year.
Because I think if that's not changed now, I don't feel comfortable continuing.
Yeah. If it stays until the end of the school year, it could be something, it's an after-factory market, it's not installed because, but it is an after-factory market device, which I am more than happy to show what it would be.
And that's, so you're saying that's something that we would have to pay for?
No, it would be something that I would put into the bus.
You would install on your buses?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gignac? Are you all set? Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a good question, Mr. Gendron, because at the last meeting, I believe a representative from SPNR said those products were purchased and were on the way and were being installed.
I wasn't here the last time, and when I negotiated that contract, it was not something that we specified with the person that I did the negotiations with. We had not had that in place.
Okay. A speaker did inform, did speak to this body and tell us that after the issue occurred, you immediately went out and purchased the product.
I have them, but until I knew, it's a $25,000 investment. So until I knew that I had it, until the end of the month, as soon as I do, I can start installing them right away.
So you did purchase them?
I did.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Mr. Hoey?
I can speak one more time.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just feel like we need to make a move, accept Pride Star's offer. January, July 1, they take over. And we set an example to every vendor in this system that comes into the school system. We're not going to tolerate these type of things. I think it's a good time for us to move on it right now. That's the last thing I'll say. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? The motion before on the floor, Mr. Gendron.
I just want to know, yeah, what are we voting on? So the motion is to...
The motion is to stay with the present company to the end of the year and at the end of the school year, reevaluate that company. That's the motion.
Okay. Can I make, suggest an amendment to that motion that we require SPR, SPNR, to add those mechanisms to their buses that force the drivers to go back and, you know, touch them before they can leave the bus?
Do you have a time for that?
Well, how soon can you do it? I would say, you know, by mid-November, November 15th.
November?
November 15th, yeah.
November 15th? All right, we have an amendment to the motion that the, that those things we put in the buses by November 15th. Is there a second to the amendment to the motion? Second by Ms. Martin. All right. Any further discussion?
Unfortunately, I'd like to ask for another amendment. Could we, I think based in our conversation, I don't think it's a matter of just us making to the end of June to then reconsider. I think we want to put in place an actual requirement of a bid process that will happen at that point, giving all three companies an opportunity to bid openly so that then we can make the decision at that point with all the information.
All right, so Ms. Martin's offering a second amendment that after the company's reevaluated, that there be an open bid process. Is that correct?
Yes, I want an open bid process at the end. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment? Second by Mr. Doherty. All right, on that amendment, all in favor? Mr. Gignac? All in favor of that amendment? All opposed? So that's it? And you're kind of more than two amendments? All right, so? All right, so roll call on the vote, on the motion as amended.
On the main motion.
On the main motion as amended.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to be voting no because I agree with Mr. Hoey. I think the Superintendent made a recommendation a few weeks ago to terminate this and have a new contract to come in January 1. Now, I completely agree, it's not the bus drivers that are the issue here, it's management. I have no problem going till June 30th with this provider. I think we should make a decision this evening and award it to somebody who is obviously filling in and providing an exemplary service for us in areas where our other providers are not. So I will be voting against this for those reasons, and I thank you.
Roll call on the motion as amended.
Mr. Dakota? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
No.
Mr. Hoey?
No.
Mayor Kennedy?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Three yays, three nays, one abstent, motion fails.
Is there another motion?
I'd like to move that we accept Pride Star's offer and have them take over in July.
Could we...
July?
Yep. 2018.
July or January?
I'm thinking July 1st.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Second by Mr. Gignac. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Martin?
I think much like Ms. Doherty, I received that proposal today at the office and wasn't able to read it. So if you could inform us what the proposal was, that might help us.
Mr. Gignac?
Perhaps we can change the motion to request the Superintendent place this on permission to enter at our next meeting so we can actually vote on a contract itself. So it's prepared, it's in front of us with the dollar figure. Does that make sense to you?
Is that a substitute motion?
Yes.
All right, we have a substitute motion to place this, to have the Superintendent place this on permission to enter at the next...
Awarding the contract to Pride Star.
Awarding the contract to Pride Star. Second to the motion by Mr. Hoey. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Doherty?
So just for clarification, the motion is now to make a decision at our next meeting to award the contract to Pride Star, but it would not go into effect until after the school year. Is that correct? So we'd be making the decision who we're going to hire soon, but it won't actually be implemented until after the school year is finished. Is that right?
Well, if I could. I think it's different from Mr. Hoey's motion. And so I think the spirit of the motion is to transfer from the present company, the present contract, to a contract with Pride Star. But I do think that there should be input from the Superintendent and, as well as both bodies, as, you know, Mr. Daley mentioned, the transfer of assets. I think there's a lot of things that need to be considered before we go forward, but I think that's why we pay the Superintendent a lot of money, so I expect that he would do that and have it on the agenda for...
But is that the timeline? We'd be making a decision, but it would not go into effect until after the school year? Is that the timeline that you're talking about, Mr. Gignac?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Gendron?
So I have a little bit of a concern about that because I feel like if we're going to make a change, I don't know why we just don't make the change. If we're going to make the change, I think that, you know, with the prior scenario, we were ensuring that the buses were going to be retrofitted, retroired equipment and so forth. I think in this situation, we really don't have the time to do that, right? We don't have the leverage to do that, so...
I'm fine with making the change right now.
I would suggest that either we delay this, as Ms. Doherty said, which I support, or we just decide to make a change and we do it in January and...
If I have to change the month to January, I will.
Well, it's not your motion anymore, it's Mr. Gignac's motion. But I guess what I was trying to suggest is that we just leave the motion like that and let the Superintendent decide what the timeline should be.
Correct.
After he's discussed it with both companies.
Fair enough.
And as well as with the Special Education Coordinator. And as long, as well as with the special, special education coordinator. And that, that makes a lot of sense to me, rather than to try to...
Fair enough. I will withdraw that. I think that makes sense.
That was the purpose of the motion. Thank you, Mayor, for cleaning it up.
Okay. Any further, Ms. Martin?
So, could we make the request that, rather than traditional permission to enter, that we'd receive the information prior to the meeting, that all of the conversations and work that the superintendent and his team does, we'll receive that in writing Friday before the next school committee meeting, so that we have an opportunity to review it before we're called to vote on it on that Wednesday?
So, we can do that, Mr.?
If it's possible. If it's not, we can reconsider the timing.
I thought you were talking about January now.
Why don't we, why don't we try to do that? There's a problem if we don't have the information in time, then we can just delay it at that time. But let's, let's go forward thinking that everything's going to work out. Is that okay?
All right, I guess.
Any further discussion? Mr. Artie?
I'm sorry, but I, I feel that it's important to point out that by having this vague, it could be January 1, it could be July 1. It really, it doesn't give us, give SPNR the information they need to move forward with installing those devices, right? I, I really, I honestly don't see, A, what the rush is to make this decision.
They're not going to get the equipment by January 1.
Any further, are you, are you all set, Ms. Artie? Are you all set?
That needs to be noted.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Dakota? Ms. Artie?
No.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Four yeas, two nays, one absent. Approved.
The next order of business is the quarterly reports on motions. Any discussion on the quarterly reports on motions? Ms. Martin?
I'd just like to make a request that my outstanding motions be addressed. Sorry.
So, that's just going to be a permission enter awarded to Pride Star with a date to follow?
I had to.
With the date, I recommend the...
I was, I was going to probably...
I just wanted...
Yes, thank you.
My request is just that we, if I can get answers to the motions that I have on here. One regarding, dates back to the budget process, I think you're aware of. It was made both, and it was made in May, made twice in May, and then made again in July. On the July 19 meeting, I had the request for the Personnel Subcommittee, which has not happened yet. I know it was canceled. We were going to res, I'm sorry, we were going to reschedule it. And then also, the motion I had made on 9/6 regarding the teacher evaluation update. If you look at the list, you'll see the ones I want. Thank you.
Anything further on this item? Ms. Artie?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, this is really, I, I can only describe it as me dropping the ball, okay? I had a motion a year ago regarding evaluating our middle school report card system and moving towards a standards-based model, as we have for the elementary schools. I was waiting for that report. And when the quarterly reports came out, and I couldn't find it, I reached out to the Superintendent's Secretary and realized that we already had the report, and it had some recommendations in it, and a timeline that I think is very important. So, I would like to put this motion back on, that we, because obviously, no one, you don't have the report in front of you. It's from over a year ago. So, my motion would be to put on, to review the report card system report that we have on, in, on file regarding our middle schools, and bring forward some suggestions to the committee about how the administration wants to move forward with implementing a standard-based report card for our middle school students and a timeline for doing that. To just bring that back to the forefront and include this report with that information, so we have the background information refreshed in our mind. Does that make sense? Sorry.
Sure. So, do you want to make a motion of that effect?
Superintendent wants to speak, I would...
Sure. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, I'm fine with that. I think if you give us the motion, if it's okay with the school committee, and you want, and it is agreeable, just give it to us in writing, and I will be very happy to do that.
Do you want me to just say right now in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to review the report card system report regarding going to a standards-based report card for our middle schools, and get recommendations from the administration on how to move forward with that.
Okay, do we have a second to the motion? Second by Ms. Martin. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, all opposed? So voted. The Chair would, is there any further discussion on the quarterly report on motions? Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Superintendent, there's two motions on there for, for me regarding the, working with the LRTA to provide bus passes to students. One of them is marked as completed, and the other one was asking you to revisit that, and it's not completed, obviously. So, I think, I would suggest you just combine that into one motion and mark it as incomplete. Thank you.
Okay, the Chair would entertain a motion to accept the reports from the superintendent, place them on file by Mr. Hoey, second by Ms. Martin. Discussion. All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Next, under new business, we have approval of an educational research request for the 21st century. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Martin to approve, second by Mr. Hoey. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Artie?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next, we have the approval of an educational research request from Boston University. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion approved by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Gendron. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Artie?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next, we have the superintendent's evaluation guidelines and timelines by the mayor. And we don't have anything on that, but we'll have something tomorrow. But anyways, we'll proceed the way we did last year, and I apologize for being remiss on that. Okay? So, the motion would be to accept the non-communication from the mayor, place it on file by Ms. Artie, second by Mr. Gendron. All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Next, under professional personnel, we have the UTL donated six days. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Hoey to approve, second by Mr. Gignac. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Artie?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.